Good evening, everybody. Today is Monday, April 6th. This is the Moscow City Council Regular Meeting. I welcome everybody here, especially on the night that you have the NCAA National Championship between Duke and Wisconsin. So for all of those that are joining us, I thank you very much. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Counselor Gauss.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. If you'll all stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Wayne. And I will start my meeting off. I've got a couple of proclamations that I'd like to read. And this is the Mayor's Day Recognition for National Service that I'm going to read. Whereas service to others is a hallmark of American character and central to how we meet our challenges, and whereas the nation's mayors are increasingly turning to national service and volunteerism as a cost-effective strategy to meet cities' needs; and whereas participants in AmeriCorps and SeniorCorps address the most pressing challenges facing our cities and nation from educating students for jobs in the 21st century and supporting veterans and military families to providing health services and helping communities recover from natural disasters end; whereas national service expands economic opportunity by creating more sustainable, resilient communities and providing education, career skills, and leadership abilities to those who serve; and whereas AmeriCorps and SeniorCorps participate to serve in more than 60,000 locations across the country, including three in Moscow, bolstering the civic neighborhood and faith-based organizations that are so vital to our city's economic and social well-being; and whereas nine national service participants of all ages and backgrounds serve in Moscow, providing vital support to city residents and improving the quality of life in our city; and whereas national service represents a unique public-private partnership that invests in community solutions and leverages non-federal resources to strengthen community impact and increase the return on taxpayer dollars, including more than $15.79 million in the state of Idaho since 1994; and whereas national service participants demonstrate commitment, dedication, and patriotism by making an intensive commitment to service, a commitment that remains with them in their future endeavors; and whereas a corporation of national and community service share a priority with mayors nationwide to engage citizens, improve lives, and strengthen communities, and is joining with the National League of Cities, City of Service, and mayors across the country to recognize the impact of service on Mayor's Day Recognition of National Service on April 7th, 2015. Now therefore, I, Bill Lambert, the Mayor of the City of Moscow, Idaho, do hereby proclaim April 7th, 2015, as National Service Recognition Day in the city, and I encourage everyone to recognize the positive impact to volunteer service in our city and to thank those who serve and find ways that we may also give back to our community and our nation. Now with that, do I have somebody here to receive the award? Okay.
Very good.
Yeah. Whereas April 2015 marks the 47th anniversary of the passage of Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, commonly known as the Federal Fair Housing Act; and whereas the Idaho Human Rights Commission has acted, has prohibited discrimination in housing since 1969; whereas equal opportunity for all, regardless of race, color, religion, sex, disability, or national origin, is a fundamental goal of our nation, our state, and our city; and whereas equal access to housing is as important a component of that goal as fundamental as the rights to equal education and employment; and whereas housing is a critical component of family and community health and stability; and whereas housing choices influences people's exposure to crime and drugs and their access to education, employment, social and cultural resources, and health care; and whereas we have enacted laws to ensure equality of choices for all transactions involving housing; and whereas the mission of the city's Fair and Affordable Housing Commission includes researching, analyzing, and recommending to the mayor and the council ways in which the city may further fair housing practices; and whereas among duties of the Fair and Affordable Housing Commission are to review the city code, analysis, and impediments to fair housing and action plans each year, and to recommend changes that it may deem necessary; and whereas ongoing education, monitoring, and public outreach are the keys to raising awareness of fair housing principles, practices, and rights and responsibilities; and whereas barriers to fair housing will only be eradicated through broad-based and consistent cooperation, commitment, and support. Now therefore, I, Bill Lambert, the Mayor of the City of Moscow, do hereby proclaim April 2015 to be Fair Housing Month, and the city of Moscow now urge all citizens to support the programs and policies that prevent or eliminate discrimination in housing practices. With that, do I have somebody from Fair and Affordable Housing here?
This is a very honored thing. There's a lot of work that needs to be done yet. We've made a lot of progress over the years in fair housing. Particularly this month, we are holding some events, and this Thursday, April 9th, there is a workshop that's going on over at the 1912 Center, put on by the Intermountain Housing Board from Idaho in Lewiston. And particularly would be of interest to tenants, landlords, realtors, mortgage lenders, and there is a special invitation being extended to the councilman, to the mayor, and any other citizen that wishes to attend. So hopefully, some of you folks can be there Thursday afternoon, April 9th, at the 1912 Center. Thank you.
Do you know the time?
From 1:00 to 5:00. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Kagan, I apologize. I didn't ask you if you'd like to say anything about the recognition for national service. If you want, you can certainly come up and address the council and everybody else. I'm sorry for that. I should have said that right off the bat, so.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to thank you and the council again for this recognition. It means a lot to us here in Moscow as civil servants, and on the behalf of myself and my fellow AmeriCorps members here in the city, we'd just like to acknowledge our thanks and our gratitude for the opportunity to serve in this great community. Here in Moscow, we have nine national service participants. There's two 4H national participants. There's two, or well, there's three working with the city. There's one for the university extension office, and then two here at City Hall, and then there's four working with PCI. Together, the seven of us that are AmeriCorps, and that's just those over at PCI, and then the UI Extension Office and the two of us here, we have put in almost 5,000 service hours since the beginning of September, and that's halfway through our term. So we're each allotted 100 hours of service, and we will be wrapping up with that at the end of August. So again, we thank you for that opportunity, and thank you for this recognition.
Kagan, before you leave, and that's one, the point that you made there with the nine total volunteers that we have in a community, these represent hundreds and hundreds of hours of work that they do within our community, and Kagan, within the city here does a number of things, and so I appreciate that. I know this council up here does as well, so we want to give everybody out there a round of applause, and this is the very thing you do, Kagan. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on. The next order of business is a consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Okay, Dan made a motion to approve the consent agenda with John second as it is. I will start to roll with Walter.
Aye.
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 Okay, and we will move on. Folks, the second thing is mayor's appointments, which I have none this evening. More to come in the future. Item number three is public comment, and this is a mayor's response time where we allot 15 minutes for the public to get a chance to get up and say anything they'd like, as long as it's not on the agenda or something that is pending before the Board of Adjustments or Planning and Zoning. With that, I see no one rushing up, so we will move on. We'll move on to item four, which is the Citizens' Commission Report, Transportation Commission. Les McDonald, you have the floor, sir. I see Phil out in the audience, so I'm sure we're going to get a chance to...
Good evening, Madam... Excuse me. Choke on that one. Good evening.
No offense.
Mayor Lambert and members of the council.
The tie a little bit.
Lovely way to start. This evening, we have the pleasure of having the Chair of the Transportation Commission give us the annual report from the commission to the council. The current Chair of the commission is a longstanding member, and I believe was a charter member in the formation of the commission back in November of 1998, and I believe is on his at least third stint as Commission Chair, and that, of course, is our own Philip Cook. Would Philip?
Welcome, Phil.
Thanks, Les. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilors. I currently serve, as Les indicated, I currently serve as Chair of the commission, and I do believe it is my third stint at that. The last time the Transportation Commission reported to you was in July of last year, so my purpose tonight is to update you on what we've been up to the last nine months and where we're headed for the remainder of this year. First, I'd like to acknowledge the leadership of Don Meyer as Commission Chair through last December, and his continuing service as a member of the commission, so thanks to Don. I took over his chair in January. Since last July, the commission has continued to work on numerous issues and projects to contribute to this safe and efficient transportation system for all of Moscow's citizens, and hopefully, we've continued to provide you with useful advice and recommendations. Among the issues the commission has discussed over the last nine months are adequate and safe access to the new Joseph Street playfields on Mountain View Road between 7th and Joseph Streets. We anticipate there are going to be many young folks who want to walk or bike to those fields, and we want to be sure they can do so safely. We also reviewed plans that were funded through the State Community Choices Program to improve pedestrian and bicycle access around Moscow Middle School. The city and the school district are working together to reconfigure the parking lots and bus drop-off areas to make them work better and more safely for everyone. The commission also discussed and voiced its support for the work of the Moscow Pathways Commission for a pedestrian and bicycle underpass of the Troy Highway at Steiner and White Avenues, and I'd like to thank the council and mayor for your support in moving this project forward. The commission also recently reviewed the Ring Road Concept, or a future system of highways and arterial streets around the outer edge of Moscow, and we provided recommendations to city staff about acceptable changes to that concept as the city enters into negotiations with Leito County concerning adjustments to the city area of impact. And in general, we've discussed other, many other issues, including street lighting at intersections and vegetation along sidewalks and at intersections. As you well know, the city completed its two-plus-year planning effort with the adoption of the Moscow On the Move Multimodal Transportation Plan in October of last year, and the Transportation Commission has spent considerable time since then digesting the information and the recommendations in that plan and deciding which issues it wants to tackle first. One of the recommendations in the plan that the commission has already asked the city to move forward is on the implementation of a pilot project for neighborhood greenways in Moscow. Neighborhood greenways use sidewalks, multi-use paths, bike lanes, shared lane markings, other signage, and traffic calming to enhance low-traffic, low-stress routes to encourage people of all ages to walk and bike. City staff has already developed a pilot project route, and we encourage you to support its implementation this year. In addition to neighborhood greenways, the Moscow On the Move Plan contains over 60 other recommended actions. The Transportation Commission spent the last couple of meetings earlier this year prioritizing to see what its involvement and interest in those recommended actions are. About half the recommended actions in the plan are either items that the commission sees a more limited role for itself, or they're items already underway. For example, several of the recommendations are about public transit. Although the commission wholeheartedly supports public transit, the smart transit system has its own board of directors who would more logically take the lead in implementing the plan's recommendations. Of the 30 or so recommended actions where the Transportation Commission foresees a lot of involvement for itself and use of its time, the members and the members are also interested. Two actions were ranked at the top by the Transportation Commission members and will be the focus of our discussions for the next few months. Ranked first by commission members was Active Transportation Recommended Action Number Six, which says, and I quote, "Conduct an extensive education and engagement process with the community and business stakeholders to adopt a downtown parking improvement program," excuse me, downtown bicycle parking improvement program, "and/or a citywide bicycle parking ordinance." So beginning at our meeting on this coming Thursday, the commission will start discussing downtown bicycle parking and how we want to proceed with that recommended action. The second highest-ranked recommended action by the commissioners, and of great interest in general, is the roadway and traffic recommended action number two, which is, quote, "Construct a full-access multimodal bridge over Paradise Creek to provide a connection to Third Street and provide traffic calming measures on Third Street from the new bridge west to Jefferson Street." This is an issue that the Transportation Commission had lengthy discussions about a decade ago, and was thoroughly, and was discussed thoroughly by the community in 2008 and 2009 with the writing and adoption of the city's current comprehensive plan. The commission spent its March, its meeting in March, re-familiarizing itself with the issues surrounding the Third Street Bridge and the Third Street Corridor west to Jefferson. We also are beginning to look at the types of traffic calming measures that would be appropriate for the corridor. The commission will continue the discussion of the Third Street Bridge and corridor over the coming months. While the Transportation Commission will be concentrating its deliberations over the next year on the recommended actions from Moscow On the Move Plan, we will also continue to devote some of our time to more immediate concerns that are brought to the commission by citizens or city staff. We encourage citizens to let the commission members know about any transportation concerns they have. And that concludes my report, and I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Counsel Art? Yeah, you mentioned neighborhood greenways, and that one was getting ready to kick off. Where is that?
It's... There's a... Tyler, I'll let Tyler speak to that.
Come up here.
It's hard to describe. It's in the transportation plan. Tyler, you can probably tell.
I can give a rough idea. Tyler Palmer, Mayor, Council. Yeah, we can give a rough idea. The greenways, they're selected based on topography and proximity to key destinations in town, so they don't just take one route. But the idea of the initial pilot projects is to have a north route, an east route, and a south route, so they all tie, it's a triangle that goes from downtown to the Herc and the pool facility, and from the pool facility down to the fairgrounds area, and then from the fairgrounds area back downtown. And so there's, we have the three initial routes that will make those three arterial routes throughout the city.
Walter?
Tyler, I think you're going to report to Public Works Finance possibly next Monday. You were on the schedule, and we ran out of time.
Twice.
Okay, twice. But...
That's correct, yeah. And in that report, we'll have the full map to show the proposed routes.
Other questions?
Thanks for bailing me out, Tyler. Not the first time, won't be the last.
Still, I remember when I was liaison, we talked about the Walk Your Wheels Initiative downtown. You know, I've seen the signs, and I like the idea. I've still seen folks riding their bikes down there, and sometimes I feel like maybe I ought to educate them, but maybe I might be a little more threatening than most if I did, and I didn't want to cross that line. But I have seen fewer people, though, riding on the sidewalks downtown, and the sheroes do seem to have helped. Have other commission members noticed, noticed a difference?
The feedback I've heard is similar to what you're, there's still people riding on the sidewalk, but there has been improvement with the sheroes on the street as well as the signs. I've heard lots of compliments about the shared lane markings on Main Street.
Do you guys have any ideas for future sheroes that, you know, other routes that would help that?
It's, I mean, sheroes are a tool, part in the neighborhood greenway. There'll be some areas where sheroes are. As we talk about Third Street, we've talked more about, so it's a tool in the toolbox, so there probably will be other places.
Thanks. Other questions for Phil? Well, Phil, thank you very much for that wonderful report, and as always, the Transportation Commission is a very, very important commission, as well as a bunch that we have in this city, and we appreciate the work that you folks do.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You bet. Have a nice evening. Okay, we're going to move on to item number five, folks, which is a public hearing concerning a proposed amendment of Title IV, Chapter 2, Chapter 6, Chapter 11, and 12 of the Moscow City Code regarding accessory dwelling units. Michael Ray, Mike, you've got the podium, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Before you tonight is a proposed amendment of the zoning code to allow accessory dwelling units within the city of Moscow. I just wanted to begin by going through what exactly accessory dwelling units are. They're separate additional living unit that is incidental and accessory to a principal dwelling unit on a single lot. They're generally small in scale. This equates to a studio or one-bedroom unit. They usually exist and do not change the character of the property or the neighborhood. Can be principal structure or detached structure, so it could be above a detached garage, or could be attached to the principal structure, in this case, a single-family dwelling, or within the single-family dwelling as well. Owner occupancy on the property is generally required, and that could be either within the principal or accessory unit, so above the garage in the unit, or within the principal dwelling, single-family dwelling, whichever one. You may have heard them called granny flats, mother-in-law units, or accessory apartments, which were common in the '60s, and wanted to go through why some communities allow accessory dwelling units within their jurisdiction. And they're intended to create new housing while preserving the character of the neighborhood, so they're on a lot with a single-family dwelling, creatively creating density within the existing neighborhood. They allow efficient use of housing stock in the public infrastructure. We're not expanding neighborhoods outside of the city. We're using the existing neighborhoods for accessory dwelling units. They provide affordable housing opportunities within the city. They also provide smaller household housing opportunities. They're generally 600 square feet or less in size, and they also provide a means of income for residents that are living within the single-family dwellings. They also may help allow family members to care for elderly or disabled while providing independent living opportunities. Commission first started talking about accessory dwelling units with a 2012 citizen survey, where they had asked two questions, the first one being would respondents support accessory dwelling units in their neighborhood? And the vast majority, 63%, strongly agreed or agreed with that statement. Just had about 17% disagree or strongly disagree. Second question they asked was would respondent likely add an accessory dwelling unit to the property? Pretty much, had 47% disagree with that statement. You had about 26% neutral, which indicates that maybe at one point in the future, they'd look at adding an accessory dwelling unit, but probably not right now. We also had 13% agree with that, so large portion of the population supports allowing accessory dwelling units in their neighborhood, but not a whole lot of them are likely to add one at this point in time. So from there, Planning and Zoning Commission researched EDU provisions from seven other cities. They had taken a look at Missoula, Montana, Coeur d'Alene, Boise, Spokane, Portland, Seattle, and Bozeman, Montana. All those communities researched, used similar purpose statements that we previously addressed in the beginning of the presentation for allowing accessory dwelling units. Some of the common considerations that were typically observed when we had looked at these jurisdictions was where they were allowed, which varied from jurisdiction to jurisdiction. The scale varied as well. It included some minimum and maximum square footages. There was some jurisdictions that allowed a percentage of principal structure, or even lot coverage standards that may vary for attached or detached ADUs. Height restrictions varied. Most common was a lower height restriction for detached structures, accessory structures. Parking was common, and typically, that was one additional space was required for the accessory dwelling unit, and that's on top of the spaces that are required for the single-family dwelling. Some of them required those to be directed off of the alley when there was an alley present. Owner occupancy was almost always required, so the owner having to live in the detached accessory dwelling unit or the single-family dwelling. There were occupancy limits. Some used the definition of a family within their zoning codes. Others just limited the number of occupants to two within the accessory dwelling unit. And then some regulated the entrance of ADUs. So maybe only one entrance facing a principal street is allowed under theirs, under those jurisdictions. There were other provisions, limits of one ADU per lot. There was some jurisdictions that required annual registration, inspections, and there was also conditional use permit required for ADUs in some zones. So from the research and the 2012 citizen survey results, the commission then decided to move forward and conduct a first of two open house meetings, and that happened on January 22nd, 2014. Press release was sent out, and the commission conducted the first open house meeting. Included within that open house was a survey that attendees were allowed to complete at the end of the open house, and that was also posted online. We had created a project website for about three to four weeks. Survey was posted to the project website. We had 28 respondents. From that, we ended up going forward with another open house meeting, and this is to go over, introduce ADUs for those who had not attended the first meeting, but also to go over some of the standards which are typically required of ADUs in some jurisdictions. And this occurred on April 2nd, 2014, and this was the second open house. Also included, this is very similar to the first open house, included a survey, and they also posted that survey and made it available online on the project website for about a month after that open house meeting, which brought us into May. There was a biased party that had flooded our online survey, and this happened for a period of a couple days. There were a little under 100 surveys submitted, and they were all very similar, so we had identified that the survey results were biased, and then we needed to throw the results out. So this brought us into summer of 2014. Commission elected to not proceed forward during the summer months, and that was to make sure citizens were back in town from summer break for those residents that either worked or attended the universities. That brought us to October 2014, and the commission once again picked up accessory dwelling units, and they decided to send out a direct mailed survey to a random sample of residents, and this was to address the second open house meeting where we had received biased results. Mailed it out to 342 residential addresses. There was a 23% response rate from those surveys, and that equates to 78% or 78 completed surveys. Nine of those were undeliverable. So they included the same two questions that were part of that 2012 citizen survey, as well as the January open house survey, that was the likelihood of you wanting to allow accessory dwelling units in your neighborhood, and then the likelihood of you having one on your property. Also contained questions about allowing ADUs, the usage of ADUs if permitted, some standards for ADUs, as well as some ownership information. for ADUs, as well as some ownership information, demographic information from the survey. We compiled that into aggregate results, as well as divided it into R1, R2, as well as R3 and R4 responses. We had coded those surveys in order to get those results, and those are compiled within...you pack it before you this evening in the survey results section. And so these are the telling results when comparing the 2012 citizen survey from the October 2014 direct mailed survey. You can tell these are very similar. So from the 2012 citizen survey, you've got about 63% agree that they would support allowing ADUs in their neighborhood, and same number here with agree in the October 2014 direct mailed survey. So these are fairly telling about population of Moscow and their support for accessory dwelling units. That brings us to the proposed ordinance before you tonight. Currently proposed to allow accessory dwelling units as accessory uses within the ag forest, farm ranch, suburban residential, and R1 through R4 zoning districts. So we would insert under the permitted accessory uses and structures, just add accessory dwelling units, and those would be subject to the specific use standards within Chapter 12 of the zoning code. Within R1 through R3, we would propose to eliminate accessory living quarters serving as a guest house or domestic servant quarters. These are essentially guest houses within the zoning code, which are allowed through a conditional use permit within those zones. We currently don't have any on file as going through the CUP process and being approved. There may be a couple of those out there, and those would be non-conforming uses and would be allowed to remain, or they could potentially be converted into accessory dwelling units if the ordinance is passed. We'd be going into Chapter 6 of the zoning code and proposing to amend the accessory building setbacks. A portion of that, so buildings greater than 200 square feet, be proposing to change the max top plate height from 10 to 14 feet. We would also, currently the code is silent on dormers within accessory structures, so we would be proposing to insert a section that states that dormers are allowed to exceed 14 feet, as long as they don't exceed 50% of the length of the wall. Just a conceptual image of what I'm referring to when I talk about buildings greater than 200 square feet, accessory structures, changing that top plate height from 10 to 14 feet. Say this would be the top plate height here. We'd be proposing to increase that four feet, and so you'd end up with a structure that looks similar to this. The idea behind this is to allow more livable space above these garages or accessory structures without increasing the size of the structure. And so if you start the pitch of the roof right up from the 10-foot top plate height, then you'd only get to livable space once you get to a five-foot mark in the ceiling. Well, that would require the structure to be a lot larger of a footprint. And so that is the reason for this proposed amendment. And this only applies to the rear 20-foot setback area of the lot. And so what this current ordinance says is that, once you reach the 20-foot rear yard setback and you want to put an accessory structure greater than 200 square feet in size, within that 20-foot rear yard setback, you're allowed to put it five feet from the rear property line, as long as you meet certain requirements. And the certain requirements are, first, it doesn't exceed 50% of the rear yard area, and that the top plate height doesn't exceed 10 feet. And that's the current requirement. We're proposing to extend that four feet and to allow these accessory structures with a top plate height of 14 feet within this area. If you were to set the accessory structure back 20 feet from the rear property line at the rear setback, you are really allowed to go all the way up to the overall building height for the current zone. So say you're in R3, you'd be allowed to build an accessory structure 35 feet in height. That's the same with a house, you know, whatever the underlying building height for that zone would be, you'd be allowed to build the house that tall. Be proposing to go within the definition section. We'd have to add definition for an accessory dwelling unit, which would be a secondary dwelling unit that is accessory to a single-family dwelling on a single lot, containing complete housekeeping facilities, and which is added to, created within, or detached from the principal dwelling unit, and subject to the specific use standards of this code. Once again, eliminating guest house from the definitions, since we'd be eliminating it from those three, R1, R2, and R3 zones. And we'd also be eliminating tourist home from the definition section, currently not listed permitted use within any zoning district of the zoning code. So it was allowed at one point in time, but after subsequent revisions to the zoning code, it's currently not an allowed use within any zone. So, once you get to the exclusionary nature of our zoning code, it's problematic when you have a defined use within the definition section, but you're not actually utilizing it within any of the zones. So we'd be proposing to eliminate that. That brings us to Chapter 12, specific use standards. We inserted a new section for accessory dwelling units. Start out with an applicability and purpose section, and then go into the specific standards that would state that, in general, accessory dwelling units must meet all district zoning regulations and minimum lot size for the single-family dwellings within those zoning districts. The size would be limited to 600 square feet, or 40% of the gross floor area of the principal dwelling, whichever is less. The occupants would be limited to two within the accessory dwelling unit. Owner occupancy would be required, whether in the accessory dwelling unit or within the single-family dwelling on the property. There'd be...a deed restriction would be required to be recorded against the property, which would be binding on the heirs, successors of the property. The owner would be required to reside on the property longer than six months in a given year. There is an option, a safety valve, for the community development director to waive this requirement for temporary absences, and this, so, for instance, sabbatical, military leave, sickness, things like that. There would also be an opportunity for the council to review and waive for other issues. And then if the owner's unable to reside on the property, only one dwelling may be occupied, whether that's the accessory dwelling unit or the principal dwelling unit. Only one would be allowed to be occupied. And then one off-street parking space would be required for the accessory dwelling unit, and this is on top of the two that are already required for single-family dwellings. So Planning and Zoning Commission did conduct a public hearing on the proposed ordinance, and that was on March 11, 2015, and recommended approval to city council. Staff's recommendation before you tonight is to conduct a public hearing, and after considering testimony, approve the proposed ordinance under suspension of the rules, requiring three complete and separate readings, and that the ordinance be read by title and published by summary. I'd certainly be able to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions from Mike from the council? Walter?
Thank you, Mayor. Mike, can you easily go back to your definition that you had about four slides back, maybe? There, yes. It speaks about being accessory to a single-family dwelling on a single lot, and yet you're including R4 and R3 zones in this.
Sure.
I'm...of almost half of this group up here that is served on PNC, I'm not one of them. So humor me and help me here.
Well, it'd be allowed in R3 and R4 as well, but it wouldn't be allowed for, say, a duplex. So say you already had a duplex on a single lot, you wouldn't be allowed to have an accessory dwelling unit on that lot. It's only for single-family dwellings within those zones. So you're only eligible if you have a single-family dwelling.
So a sixplex or a 12plex wouldn't have an accessory unit?
No.
It's got to be a...regardless of zone, it has to be a single-family residence on that lot?
Correct.
Thank you.
Correct.
Other questions for Michael?
The PNC people all knew that.
Art?
What happens in the woeful case of a scofflaw owner who decides, "I'm going to rent both of them and live the good life in Costa Rica"? What's the legal recourse?
Well, all these regulations are within the zoning code, and so it'd be a violation of the zoning code, which would be a misdemeanor under the city regulations. Generally, we go off of complaint basis, so it'd be up to the neighbors to call in a complaint, obviously if they don't see the owner there on a consistent basis. But we also have means of checking property records through the county. There's homeowner's exemptions on properties, and so, you know, maybe it's a year, or every year, we check the accessory dwelling units that have come in and applied for building permits, constructed an accessory dwelling unit, and we review it that way as well on an annual basis.
Walter?
Yes, sir, I just thought of another one, Mike. Under your example, talking about a greater than 200 square foot, and I think you took that to a above-a-garage situation. Is the garage square footage itself included in your computation of square footage?
It's not. It's just the livable space within the accessory dwelling unit.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Wayne?
Mike, one of the things you made a comment was that it would not appreciably change the character of the property. And I'm wondering how I can think of, particularly if you had a corner lot, it had a large backyard. What are the requirements for setback from the street side for an accessory dwelling unit?
Same as the principal dwelling.
Well, so then essentially you could put up a 24-by-24-foot structure behind the house with parking coming off the street to that. That sounds to me like it would be an appreciable change to the property.
Wouldn't be that large in size, though, because you can't have a 24-by-20. It would be...because it'd go over the maximum 600 square feet, right?
Oh, 24-by-24 is only about 560.
Oh, I thought you said 24-by-40.
No, 24-by-24.
Well, you could do that right now with an accessory structure. You could have a garage at the rear of your property and, you know, access via driveway off the side street, and you'd be able to have that right now as an accessory structure. You could have, you know, multiple uses, your own personal music studio, maybe a home brew, canning kitchen.
Correct. I understand that. Thank you.
Other questions for Mike before I open the public hearing? Thank you, Mike. We may refer back to you on some questions here as we go along. I am going to open this public hearing at 7:42. At this time, I would take public testimony in favor of the ADUs, known as accessory dwelling units. Please state your name, your address, and who you are.
Victoria, 72121 North Lily, Moscow. You have my written comments, and as long as the criteria remain, I'm in favor of this. In looking at the packet this afternoon, I noticed that other people have mentioned registering these on a yearly basis or every couple of years. I just thought I would address that briefly. I think it's a really good idea to have some kind of registry, and would suggest keeping it super simple, so that you don't make a lot of work for staff. And I think, I don't know how they're normally done, but the way I would do it, I use little checkboxes, and I came up with something this afternoon that might cover the bases as I see it. The questions I would have is something like, "I currently reside in the principal unit or the accessory unit or off-site." They can't be off-site. If they self-report themselves as being off-site, you've got a red flag, and then you know to go after it. Addressing for the principal and accessory units are same or different, new ones will be different, but the old ones might not be, and emergency services like residences to have separate addresses. So if there's a fire, they know which one they're going to. So you could catch that. Then I would have something like, "Principal unit is being used for my residence," checkbox, or "family or friend residence," or "guest accommodation," maybe granny's gone and now you're just using it for guests, or rental, or other. It gives you a little information. And then the same questions to the accessory unit, how it's being used. And then if either unit is not being used as a resident, how is it being used? Which is just informational to you, how it's going along economically. So maybe if it's no longer being used as a resident, it might be workspace for garden hobby office, something like that. Maybe a glorified man cave in the basement now, you know? It might just be interesting to know that. And has it been vacant for a year or more than a year? Because that might tell you something in terms of finances or economics. So anyway, I do think it's really important to have some kind of registry, and I recognize that it needs to be very simple. And I think it can be very, very simple, and it would just help with the whole process and assure the neighbors that if it's going off track, you've got a way of catching it. So I was just going to add that. Thank you.
Thank you, Victoria. Additional testimony in favor? I would take a general testimony or opposition at this time. Please come up, state your name and address.
I'm Roberta Radovich. I live at 809 East B Street, Port Russell neighborhood. I'm a landlord, and the passing of this might be really useful to me, but I'm not altogether in favor of it. Part of the reason is because I have experienced, as a landlord, when my tenants have gotten out of hand, how difficult that is on the neighbors in those areas. You know, someone can come in to you, and they're both med students, and they have good references, but then they throw a party that goes all night, and I hear about it from the neighbors on both sides. And I had, you know, the guy that moved in, and there was the barking dogs next door in the single-family zone. But, you know, he got so aggressive with the owners of that property that I got a call from them, and they said, "You know, my wife is afraid this guy's going to come over and kill her dog." You know, so this sort of thing can happen when you intersperse rapid turnover rentals into an area that's a single-family zone. And it can happen in a duplex zone, too, but when people got that single-family house, they had an understanding that there would be a certain amount of peace and protection. They imagined a neighbor that could really be somebody that they would become friends with, not somebody that would turn over every half a year or one year, that would not have a long-term relationship. So I'm having some difficulties with, not so much with the units...now, my house is a duplex. It's been a duplex since 1950, so it's grandfathered in, and it's in a single-family zone. Parking becomes a problem in my street in Fort Russell. I see that they ask for one more parking space, and I'm grateful for that on that ordinance. But when you introduce a backyard structure, it does change the character of a neighborhood. I've seen a couple of these added up in our neighborhood, and they are just behemoth. They gobble up the yard, and they just destroy the privacy of your backyard next door. There's no way not to have them looking down into your yard until maybe 10 years have gone by, and you can plant some kind of plantings that grow up in front of those dormer windows or the windows on the end of the house that may be looking down into what was once your private backyard. So I would say if someone is living, as a landlord, living in a single-family house and adds an accessory unit in his basement, or his upstairs, he's living with that person very directly, and is far more likely to be concerned about the details that would concern others in a single-family neighborhood. If he can isolate them to a place out in the back, there's liable to be other things happening, you know? And anytime you add renters, you're also adding additional pets in a neighborhood, which can, truthfully, can be really, really annoying if you're a single-family person next to So I feel like there's no protection left once you pass this kind of an ordinance. There's no protection left for people that really want neighbors, that they can count on being homeowners and not of a transient nature. on being homeowners and not of a transient nature. I would especially ask you to consider putting a variance in the R1 single-family zone so that we can preserve a place of peace somewhere in the city for people who really need that. I mean, there's different ideas, you know? We have an increasing.
Roberta, could you please wrap it up so we could go on?
I'm sorry?
Would you please wrap it up?
Yeah.
We understand that you're opposed to it, so.
One statement, the concept that our populations are increasing and we should all make accommodations is one idea, but I would say that the other concept is we're getting squeezed all the time, and people that really want peace should be allowed a place to have that. So that's all for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. A question for Roberta.
Walter.
If I may, Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead.
You made a comment about putting a variance in the R1 zone. Can you explain that?
Well, I just mean that right now they're not permitted without having input from the neighborhoods. I mean, you can't add a rental unit in a single-family zone without getting some kind of a variance for that.
Do you mean, Mike may have to help me here. Do you mean a conditional use permit?
Yeah, I think that's what I mean. I'm sorry, my terminology is bad.
Might you ask Mike, Walter, rather than Roberta?
Well, she was the one that posed the.
Yeah, but she might not know the solution to it, but Mike may have the answer whether it's feasible or not.
Answer me when you get back to the podium, please, Mike. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Michael, would you, I'm going to go ahead and let you answer that question right now, if you can bring it up, so we can clear it up before I ask for additional.
Did you understand what point she was making? Is that a conditional use permit?
We currently draw distinction between rental and owner-occupied property within any zone. So you can have a single-family dwelling, and whether you choose to rent it out or live in it, there's no distinction under our zoning code. In order to have additional occupants, like six unrelated individuals, sometimes you go through either a boarding house or a residential rental unit, and that may be what she's referring to in an R1 zone.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I will take additional testimony for the general or opposed. Please state your name and address, sir.
My name's Mike McGinn. I live at 942 North Cleveland in Moscow. Mr. Mayor and Council, nice to see you all again. I have three concerns, and my number one is it's going to change the character of a single-family residence. It has to. I mean, that's why we bought in single-family neighborhoods. It will change the character regardless of what we do. And I think that another additional thing is that the parking, off-street parking and on-street parking. You get in a neighborhood right now that has 30-foot wide streets with parking only on one side, and you add another vehicle, and most people, if you're a family of four and you're living upstairs, well, probably you'll have at least three cars. And then if you have the 600-square-foot, you have, excuse me, two folks downstairs, and they're likely to have at least one car, maybe two. So where are all these cars going to park, especially when you're in a neighborhood where there's only a 30-foot wide street? And my last item is, I'd like you to consider a conditional use permit. So it involves the neighborhood, and let the neighborhood have some kind of say on what's going on in their neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Additional testimony for either general or opposed.
Mr. Mayor, council members. I'm Ken White. I live at 835 Harold Street in Moscow. The previous speakers covered an awful lot of the same points that I have, same concerns. I think over time, and it's not going to happen in the first year or two if this passes, but in the long term, I can see the single-family residential neighborhood as being a thing of the past with rental units and the majority of the people that were, filled out the survey that would consider, if I remember this right, Mike, a majority of the member, of the people that filled the survey out that said they would consider putting up an ADU or would plan on renting it, and that would just be a start. Other ADUs that might have the mother-in-law in it or the, you know, granny, whatever, once the granny moves on elsewhere, it'll more than likely become a rental. So essentially, in my opinion, we're looking at, this ordinance looks at rental units, not a granny flat-type accommodation. And I think the big, I guess the biggest reason I have for opposing it is the character of the neighborhoods. To me, both R1 and R2, I live in an R2, and it's a single-family residential neighborhood. And I, my wife and I cherish living in that kind of a setting. You know, we've got a nice, quiet street, you know, good neighbors for the most part. But I see that street as going away from that over time and becoming, you know, I guess, a multifamily residential district. And I prefer the, everybody has their preference, and I prefer the lower-density, single-family neighborhood, and I think a lot of people in Moscow do that as well. Some people just spoke about that, but anyway, I won't. The R1 and R2 being the, to me, they had a draft proposal or a draft ordinance early on that I've been following the PNC with, and it came back as exempting one, Zone R1 and Zone R2 from this accessory dwelling units. And to me, that's reasonable. Then it applies in areas that are already multifamily-type homes and apartments, that sort of thing. So anyway, I think if our purpose is to accommodate in-laws and grannies, we're kind of off-base. It's not really doing that without, to me, it's more of a changing of the neighborhood. And anyway, thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ken. Okay, additional testimony, general testimony or opposition?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I would note that there were several letters and communications that were included in the packet for the record.
The council, and how many were there? There were four. All council members read these. They were part of the packet over the weekend. I think there was four, if I remember right.
I have one, two, three, four, five, six total.
Okay. Anybody have any questions on those from the council's standpoint? Okay, with that, I will close the public hearing at 7:59. Turn over to the council. How would you like to proceed?
Walter. Thank you, sir. Mike, please. One of the people that testified made the comment that over half of the respondents to a survey said that they would consider creating a rental. I think the information I saw was 37% said they would, which is still a fair percentage to me. Is that the intent of this? Is it to create rentals with ADUs? I understand the original thing about granny flats and mother-in-laws, and my father in the 50s converted part of a garage so that my grandmother could be moved into it. I don't know whether the city had anything for it against it, but he did it. So I get that part, but to do it as rentals, and I guess my real question, Mike, is why wouldn't this just become student housing? We are a college town.
I mean, rentals are one aspect of the ordinance. It still allows, so if you're an elderly couple, it would allow additional rental income. Maybe instead of go-to-good Sam, you're able to stay within the neighborhood. Could also, maybe for an elderly, single person, you could allow maybe additional income, but you could also allow for a caretaker on the property to mow the lawn, take care of groceries, supplies, things of that nature, take care of you. I think those are all valid outcomes of the ordinance. But also, other proposals would be elderly family member, it could be yourself, and renting out the single-family dwelling. But really, those are the real intentions of the ordinance. Does that answer your question?
It helps.
Okay.
Bill?
John.
I'm the council liaison for planning and zoning, so I was at all of the meetings that the council, or the planning and zoning discussed this, and they have answered all of the questions I had, because at the beginning of the discussion, I was against this. I thought, you know, R1, R2 is, you know, almost carved in stone as far as the neighborhood, as far as the number of people that could live there, the number of different living conditions that could exist. And over the time and listening to the arguments pro and con made by various people, a lot of them people that were members of planning and zoning, and then other people that came in, my idea changed. And I think that what the planning and zoning has done, and then Mike at the city, they have answered the questions, and I don't think, for example, we've been, there's been a discussion about, Walter just brought up, valid point, is this just a way to get rental property on your property? Well, as Mike said, you can do that right now. And what we're trying to do here is to, eventually, it is going to be someone that is not a member of your family, but to start with, it's going to be a member of your family that is supposed to live in these conditions. And then as far as changing the neighborhood vision of itself and the constitution of the neighborhood, anything you do is going to be so expensive. You would be much better off, if you want a duplex, go out and buy a lot and build a duplex, because by the time you build one of these things or do the changes to a house to put it on the inside for no more than 600 square feet, and then you have to read it to rent it or lease it out, it'll be so far out of the ballpark, you won't be able to do that. If you just take a look at, this is how much I spent, this is how much I got to get out of it. I don't think that's, I don't think that's a valid, and a valid consideration. I think that with all of the discussion that's been done, all the research that was done by the Planning and Zoning Commission, and the information that Mike gave the Planning and Zoning Commission, anything they asked for, he got. I think it's a good idea. And then one other thing, the number of people that are actually going to do this is very, very small. And I think I will be long dead and buried before 50 of them in the city of Moscow are put up.
To John's point there, Mike, you had, one of the slides you had showed up there that we had 68%, it's either 63% or 68% in favor of it, and then they asked the question, would you do this? And I think there was a small portion, maybe 14% or something.
28 people.
And it showed, it showed the percentage up here.
Yeah, of the people that responded.
Would you likely add an accessory dwelling unit to the property? I just wanted to point that out, because that was a pretty good slide right there. And it was.
So you had about 13% agreeing.
13% said they would. Or they would think about doing it.
Well, agree is 19.
Okay. I'll go to Wayne, and I'll come back to you, Walter.
Well, John, I appreciate what you're saying, and I suspect that you're probably right. At $100, $150 a square foot, it makes it pretty tough to build something like that as an accessory dwelling unit. However, when we pass an ordinance, I don't feel that we pass an ordinance using speculation. We pass it saying, this can happen, and you can allow it to happen. And so the questions have been asked, the questions have been answered. The question now is, do we as individuals agree with the answers? The comprehensive plan speaks pretty strongly about maintaining the character of neighborhoods. And, you know, I've been listening to the arguments pro and con on these accessory dwelling units for quite some time, and shifting back and forth on my feelings on that, depending upon the conversation I'm having. But I'm settling down now with the final thoughts that when folks do buy their residence in an R1 or an R2, they bought it as a single-family residence. They didn't buy it with the idea that this neighborhood could be created with higher density because somebody is now able to put in a 600-square-foot rental unit. And we can call the mother-in-law house, and it may start out that way, but ultimately, the likelihood of it becoming rental property is very real. And I don't believe that most folks that live in R1 and R2 care to see rental property. In fact, if you've lived in an R1 or R2 neighborhood, that's been a pretty nice neighborhood, and it's all owner-occupied, unfortunately, we've seen the cases where homes that folks had to move because of job or whatever, and they weren't able to sell the house, the house turned into rental property. And very, very seldom is that home taken care of and maintained to the standards that it was when it was owner-occupied. I digress a little bit, but I am at the point where I will not support this ordinance because I don't believe rental property should be installed in R1 or R2 neighborhoods.
Walter, I'll go to you next.
Responding to John Webber's comments about, or maybe it was the mayor regarding the 13% that are likely, well, if that's next door to a particular person's house, that's 100% likely. So it's a matter of whose ox is getting gored, I think, and I'm coming around to, I think, where Wayne may be, that we need to, I'm not sure that I'm ready to gamble that it's going to be only next door to people that won't mind it.
Yeah, I've been listening, and a couple of thoughts come into my mind, and one is that relative to the character of the neighborhood, establishing, as we discussed earlier, a garage in your backyard has every bit as much visual impact on the neighborhood as an accessory dwelling unit separate. But the other thing to remember is a lot of these accessory dwelling units can also be contemplated internally to the existing structure, in which case there's no impact to the visuals of the neighborhood whatsoever. They also are designed to include one off-street parking space for each accessory dwelling unit, which helps with that. Not more than two people per unit. That's not so bad either, I don't think. And also, I think the biggest factor of all is the fact that one or the other of the two units has to be owner-occupied, and I can't see owners living in proximity to anything terribly noisy or invasive. And so I think that keeps a good lid on the impact of nuisance to the rest of the neighborhood. Certainly, no more nuisance than the occasional bad neighbor who moves in and kind of trashes out the house, parks RV in the front yard and everything else that might be going on. So for me, I think it provides a valuable asset to people. So for me, I think it provides a valuable asset to people, both elderly in the beginning and then perhaps later on as a rental, if necessary. But I don't see it as necessarily increasing the density to the point of turning R1 or R2 neighborhoods into R3 and R4 neighborhoods, both in terms of the way the units are constructed and the way in which they behave within a neighborhood, and especially with only 13% indicating that they might do so. Jim, you were on P&amp;Z.
Yeah, I've been through this on the planning and zoning from its inception, and when you look at the numbers about how many people in town actually favor this, that's kind of supportive of it, that a small minority of people who favor it even would even consider doing one, says it's not going to be a real prevalent thing. We're not going to have a building boom of accessory dwelling units around town right away. The character of the neighborhood thing is the number-one thing that I, that I think goes against it, and all the conditions that have been put on this to, to control that, I think it make it unlikely that the character of the neighborhood would be destroyed. You could only have two more, two additional people living on that property. You could have two additional people living in any single family now. You can take any single-family residence and turn it into a rental now, with none of these restrictions, without adding any off-street parking, or the owner having to live there. So although, all these conditions have been put on, and people that favor the conditional use permit, I think the conditions that anyone in the neighborhood would be looking for have been addressed, where the owner has to live on the property, you have to have an additional off-street thing, it can only be 600 square feet, and only two additional people can live in the property. So I don't think that there's anything that goes on in one of these that can materially change the character of the neighborhood, that if you wanted to, if I wanted to have a rental unit in a single-family neighborhood, I could go buy it and turn it into that and not have any of these restrictions on me. So the single-family, the accessory dwelling unit doesn't really affect the character of the neighborhood, the way it's written in this ordinance.
Dan, you listened to this on the admin committee on March 23rd?
We did, and, you know, I had in that committee the liaison too, and the former member of the Planning and Zoning Commission, so, you know, and obviously, they spent, you know, we're looking clear back at 2012, so there's, this, this wasn't hurried through at all. There's a lot of work by staff and planning and zoning on something, so it's not something that we're entering into lightly. You know, and I think that, you know, all of the, the i's have been dotted and the t's are crossed, and I agree with Jim and John there that this isn't something that's going to be made a lot of all quick. And then I look back at some of the testimony at P&amp;Z, and we're going to be bringing some stuff into compliance that is out of compliance right now, that, that's out there. I mean, I don't know how many there are, but at least that way, there's something that we'll, we'll know a little more about because we're going to have to have the deed restrictions on them and everything like that. So I think that with that, I'll, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion here, and we'll see how we come down. I'd make a motion that we approve the ordinance under suspension of the rules requiring three complete and separate readings, and that they be read by title and published by summary.
I'll second that.
Okay, we've got a motion by Dan, and a second by John, to approve the ordinance under the suspensions of the rules requiring three complete and separate readings, and the ordinance be read by title and published by summary. Walter?
Thank you, Mayor. Jim's comments regarding you can turn any single-family residence into a rental now, I believe are true, but you cannot turn that lot into two single-family residences, you can only have one. You, so, but this would allow two, if you consider, you know, two people in one unit as a family, in the main houses, or vice versa as a family. So yes, you can have rentals in a R1, R2 now, but you can't have two single-family residences on the same lot now. I've, I've lived in R1, and I did it for the reasons that someone spoke about earlier, and, and liked it that way, and really wasn't intending to see it changed. And I'm like, whoever made the comment that we can't, we can't do this based upon whether anybody's going to use it or not, we have to presume that people will because it'll be available. So I, I'm going to have to not agree with the motion.
Wayne?
Now, one, one final comment. When we, when we go to a, a single-family residence that's been turned into a rental unit, we do have the boardinghouse ordinance that falls into place where only four non-related people can live in it. And there's still an issue with more cars parked on the street than, as a rule, with a regular family. So I don't think that's a good comparison. I don't think that that's a fair comparison. And I still think that if you're looking at this and speculating that, well, there's not going to be very many built anyway, I don't think that that's the proper way to pass an ordinance. And if you're the person in an R1 or R2 that suddenly has somebody build one next to you, then you are affected by it. So it does change the character of the neighborhood. And so I will, I've been, very seldom am I a five-to-one vote, but I can see it coming this time, and I don't care.
Okay, well, with that, I'll start the roll with John.
Hi.
Hi.
Dave?
Hi.
Hi.
Not five-to-one, Wayne.
Right. Okay, it's four to two, but it passes, so.
It'll pass.
Stephanie, this is ordinance number 2015 dash-
Six.
Six? Did you say six?
Yeah, zero-six.
Okay, zero-six. Okay, so we have ordinance number 2015 day zero-six, an ordinance of the city of Moscow, Idaho, a municipal corporation of the state of Idaho, providing for the amendment of Moscow City Code Title IV, Chapters 2, 6, 11, and 12, providing for the definition of accessory dwelling unit, providing for the establishment of specific use standards for accessory dwelling units, providing for the allowance of accessory dwelling units as a permitted accessory use within all residential zoning districts, providing for an amendment of accessory building setback requirements, providing that the provisions of this ordinance be deemed severable, and providing that this ordinance be in full force and effect from the date of its passage, approval, and publication according to law. So with that, we will move on, folks, to item number six, which is request for proposal, single-stream recycling. Tim Davis, you have the floor, sir.
May I hear it, council? The city council approved presentation of a request for proposal for modification of services for delivery of single-stream curbside recycling services to Latos Sanitation. The level and nature of services sought and outlined in the RFP include biweekly, single-stream curbside recycling collection for 5,740 single-family dwellings that currently have access to curbside recycling, and alternating biweekly, single-stream curbside recycling collection for approximately 3,992 apartment units that do not currently have access to curbside recycling. The RFP asks Latos Sanitation to provide roll carts for an estimated 60% participation rate for the new program. The RFP also asks for two 20-yard roll-off containers for additional glass drop-off site or sites, and monitoring and maintenance, maintenance of said sites. Prior to implementation of the new single-stream recycling program, glass will be discontinued to be accepted at the curb. This will be kind of a timing issue. Glass will continue to be accepted at Moscow Recycling as well as the new site or sites. The RFP also asks for costs for the roll carts, operations and maintenance, cost for material recovery, facility processing, and tonnage, based on an estimated 1,120 tons of collected material annually. The RFP also asks for one-time startup costs for the new program. The RFP response from Latos Sanitation proposes the use of Toter brand roll carts equipped with radio frequency identification tags, similar to those used in our solid waste collection carts. Toter builds a strong and durable cart that is widely used for single-stream applications as well as solid waste collection applications. The response included three options for council consideration. Option number one included the use of 35-gallon, 65-gallon, and 95-gallon roll carts with an annual cost of $325,000, $325,959. Option two included the use of 65- and 95-gallon carts with an estimated annual cost of $3,000, And option three included the use of 95-gallon carts only with an annual cost of $278,604. In addition to these annual costs, each option had one-time startup costs of $182,500. When presented to Public Works Finance Committee on March 23rd, the committee recommended option two, which was the 65- and 95-gallon carts. In your packets, you have summary spreadsheets outlining the proposed costs for each option. The difference in cost between the options is attributed mostly to operations and maintenance, including exchanges, repairs, and storage, extra cart inventory, and replacement parts necessary with multiple size carts. I would like to address these summaries and answer any questions that the council may have, and then Public Works Finance Committee also asked staff to be prepared to discuss the financial aspects of the new program. Following the summary spreadsheets, I have prepared a short presentation addressing the effects on the sanitation fund by implementation, by implement, implementation of single-stream recycling. So with that, I don't know if council has any question on these options, but I can go through them one by one.
Well, Tim, I ask Wayne, Public Works and Finance Committee, so, listen to this on March 23rd.
We did. There was a pretty good discussion as to the different size of containers that would be utilized, everything from the option number one, which is a 95, down to all three of them, which would be an additional a 65 or a 35. And our recommendation was, as Tim indicated, option number two, to allow folks to have an opt, a choice between a 65 and a 95. $1.72 extra for a single-family residence wasn't too bad. The thing we liked more than anything else is the fact that now the apartments will be taking advantage of this also. And so we'll see, what was it, 60% increase in recycling?
We're anticipating 100% increase in tonnage, but that includes the glass being removed from the curbside.
Participation, though, I think.
60% participation is what we estimate.
And so, that was good. Now, there was, Walter had brought something up, however, about looking into the, into the budget and seeing if there was a way to do this without any additional $1.72 a month increase. And didn't you ask that, Walter, as I recall?
And I understood Tim to indicate they're prepared to answer that. I have a couple of more questions before he gets to that.
Yeah, go ahead. And Walter? Go ahead, continue.
Under, to follow up on what Wayne, Wayne said, I was a 90, number one, I want to go to single-stream recycling, period, end of story. Let's just do it. It takes, it takes people some amount of time to throw stuff in a green bucket all week long, and then turn around and have to sort it out into five or six different things, and go find little plastic bags to put the three cans in, and all this stuff, and, and get it out to the curb. I have experience with single-stream. It's really nice to step to the back door and throw everything in it, including all the different kinds of plastic that you can't send now. It's just a lot of easier operation for people, so I can understand why more people would take advantage of it. And I was a proponent of the single 95 until I did talk to a few people and listen to some folks, and realized that storing a 95 can be a problem for some people. It'll be picked up every two weeks, and if, if you've got Christmas week, and you've got a lot of boxes and all this stuff, you may have to hold part of the cardboard for the next cycle around to get it in a 65, but, but I'm kind of coming around to two sizes, as Wayne said. With that said, though, the apartments would have 95s.
Correct.
You're not proposing a single big dumpster that's labeled recycle because of contamination.
Correct. We propose that the apartments use 95s only. The 65s and 95s would be available to the single-family folks.
And Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
And to make the point clear to people that are listening and so forth, every, every solid waste customer of the city of Moscow would pay this, whether or not they elect to recycle.
Whether or not they elected to participate in the program or not.
Yeah, that's, that's-
Correct.
That's correct. Okay. So this would, it wouldn't, so everybody would pay whatever we end up with. Art was sat on the committee, Public Works as well. Did you have any other points about the discussion you wanted to make? And then we'll, and Wayne or I, or the mayor can, can ask for the question on, can we afford to absorb this or not?
The only point that I had that pushed me over the edge was the fact that initially I was in favor of large dumpsters at the apartment buildings for all the recycling. But it was pointed out that if you wind up with a couple of glass bottles in there, the whole giant container is then shot, and is a detriment to the whole process. And so therefore, I thought, well, 95-galloners are, make a whole lot more sense because if you get a bottle or two in there, you lose the 95 gallons, as opposed to a giant dumpster full of recyclables. And so that's what pushed me over the edge on that issue. And again, the people who have more difficulty storing larger units, and moving them around even, if you're frail or have a disability or something, toting a 95-gallon round could be a little problematic. So having the two options, I thought, fit most of the people in town best.
Now, let's talk to some of the other councils.
The two options sound great to me, but I, I know it's been proposed, Tom Lamar wrote to the council and said he favored the smaller one because he doesn't have that much refuse as a single person or, but it seems like you-
The three-gallon one was never an option.
Yeah. Yeah, three, the three-gallon size didn't really work out. But it seems like you can retain that. It's not smelly garbage, it's cardboard and plastic, and it can be retained until it's full and then put out to the curb. So since it reduces the cost, I think it'd be better to go with the bigger option.
Well, Tim, if I remembered right, too, and this wasn't brought up, the single-stream would be picked up like every other week, twice a month?
Correct.
Is that correct? So if somebody did have a 65-gallon container, and they, they recycled, but they may not need to put it out every two weeks.
Exactly.
They may put it out once a month, or, or twice in a six-week period, or something of that nature. So that, there's some availability there, too. And as Jim said, it is not, it's not garbage that's going to smell your garage up or anything else, it's recyclable. Jim, you had another plan, I'm sorry.
Just, if Tim could tell us, like, for reference, the, the totes that we take out with garbage now to the curb, what size are those?
Those are 35-gallon, 65-gallon, and 95-gallon.
Negative, the grain tub.
The small one, recycled.
Oh, I believe those are 14 or 17, 18?
18-gallon?
Okay.
No, you're talking about the small, the little boxes. I'm talking about the what we use for garbage now, the roll carts.
That's what I thought. They're 35, 65, and 95-gallon.
Okay.
Wayne?
Just a couple of things I wanted to clarify is, number one, and these have come from emails that I've gotten from a few concerned folks, and that is that, first of all, the recycling center is not going to be closed. So let's, we'll make that clear.
No, it is not going to be closed, and we will continue to take source-separated material down at the recycling center, nothing will change.
Nothing has changed there. And as far as plastic bottles, we'll be able to put in numbers one through seven.
Correct.
Okay, and that, we're not going to see that change, and all of a sudden decide, well, six and sevens are not good, we'll, we'll do all those. And then I don't, did you mention the fact that recycling will go to every other week?
Correct.
Yes, yeah, so every other week. So with that, I think I'd like to go ahead and make a motion that this-
Time out. Dan would like to speak.
Joe, Wayne? Well, I call timeout.
I'll recognize the council president, Dan, and we'll come back.
You know, before you-
Timeout!
Before you go make a motion, Wayne, I want to know about the, if we can keep this at a, at a zero. keep this at a zero cost to the consumer. That's been my big thing, is a lot of folks have said to me, you know, I'm all for this, but I, you know, I'm taxed enough already. You know, that's been the big thing. So, we're going to see if we can make Don tighten the belt a little bit here.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that the summary cost spreadsheets that were in the packets made sense to everybody. If you don't need any further clarification.
Just what color are the totes?
What color do you want? I propose green.
I think what Dan was referring to, though, is on item, option number two, the dollar seventy-two, is that correct, Dan?
Can we absorb that?
That's what Dan's, the question that Dan had.
And that's what the presentation will address.
Okay, let's find out.
Okay.
Before we go saying what we want.
Start that baby up, so.
Option two, which we just discussed, with the sixty-five and ninety-five gallon, was recommended by the Public Works Finance Committee when presented on March twenty-third. All options included the one hundred and eighty-two thousand five hundred dollars in one-time startup costs for the program. Option two added three hundred and three thousand one hundred and sixty-seven dollars in annual cost to provide single-stream services in addition to that one-time startup cost. Staff is projecting that the FY fifteen sanitation budget will carry over a hundred and thirty-five thousand five hundred dollars in unrestricted fund balance based on the FY fourteen audit. Whoops. Staff is projecting additional eighty-five thousand two hundred and twenty-two dollars in surplus revenues in the current FY fifteen sanitation budget. Total projected fund surplus for the current FY fifteen sanitation budget will be two hundred and twenty thousand dollars, seven hundred and twenty-two. The surplus is a result of a couple different lines in the sanitation operations budget. One of those is solid waste development line, which we budgeted a hundred and twenty thousand in the current budget, and this is for programs such as single-stream and other programs that come along the pipe. Staff anticipates expending only twenty thousand dollars of this line in the current budget. The FY fifteen sanitation budget also contains a line for operating contingency. This line is budgeted for unanticipated operating or facility emergencies. This contingency line contained one hundred and thirty-one thousand eight hundred and sixty-five in the fifteen budget. Staff does not anticipate any expenses from this line in FY twenty-fifteen. Public Works Finance Committee directed staff to be prepared to discuss how much of the one-time startup cost and annual cost of the single-stream recycling program could be covered by the city. Staff analysis of the FY fifteen sanitation budget indicates that the one-time startup cost of a hundred and eighty-two thousand five hundred for single-stream recycling could be absorbed with surplus within the current FY fifteen sanitation budget. If council chooses to have the sanitation fund absorb these one-time startup costs, it would result in a twenty cent per month reduction in new single-stream recycling costs to each customer.
So, I have to stop you, Mayor, and ask a question, if I might. Does that come off the one seventy-two?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
It'll be a one fifty-two.
The twenty-twelve Comprehensive Sanitation Rate Study adopted by council concluded that collection rates or fees were generating more than the overall revenue needs of the collection service. In other words, we were charging too much for collection services back then. The rate study also concluded that the existing revenue for solid waste processing facility was not meeting the annual expenses. What we're talking about there is tipping fees. Beginning with the FY thirteen budget, sanitation rate adjustments were made to correct these findings. Collection rates were reduced, and with the exception of the adjustments made to cover the cost of the solid waste roll cart collection program, they have not increased since. The rate study called for a three percent increase to collection rates beginning in the current FY fifteen budget. Sanitation collection rates were not increased in the FY fifteen due to the stability of the fund and as a result of the roll cart program and the elimination of the tag system. The rate study also called for immediate tipping fee increases at the solid waste processing facility of three percent annually beginning in FY thirteen. Contractual disposal obligations to Leito County and the cities limits these increases to that of the annual average CPI adjustments. So we weren't able to adjust those tipping fees at three percent a year like the rate study called for, but rather the CPI adjustment. While collection rates have not been increased in the last three years, the sanitation fund has absorbed five point eight percent contractual expense increases to LSI for things such as collection services, solid waste processing facility services, recycling services, and another three point five three percent contractual expense increases for the long haul and MSW disposal services to waste connections over the past three years. Contractual service increases for the upcoming FY sixteen budget are anticipated to add an additional one point five percent expense across the board. The rate study included a capital improvement plan and schedule comprised of land acquisition related to the recycling center, their recycling center expansion, and long-term disposal option feasibility studies. Capital fund improvement monies have not been spent as scheduled in the plan due to the fact that single-stream recycling is currently being contemplated, and the effects of the new program may likely change some facets of the expansion plans. Neither the solid waste roll cart collection program or single-stream recycling program were considered at the time that the rate study was performed. We currently only have one and a half years of history with the solid waste roll cart program, and none of our own history regarding a single-stream recycling program, and the effects that it may have on the solid waste collection revenues. Sanitation Capital Projects Fund has a balance of two point nine million dollars as audited following the FY fourteen budget year. The projected FY fifteen ending balance of the Capital Projects Fund is three point four three nine million, and that will be met as planned by the rate study schedule. Sanitation Operations Fund has maintained transfers to the capital fund and maintained the revenue schedule as adopted in the comprehensive rate study to this point. Future budget models indicate that modest increases may be necessary with the addition of single-stream to maintain the capital improvement schedule as called out in the rate study. The FY sixteen budget model indicates that there will be a deficit of four hundred and twenty-six thousand four hundred and sixty-seven dollars with the added expenses of the new single-stream program if no adjustments are implemented. The FY sixteen budget model also indicates that with a one point five percent increase to tipping fees and a three percent increase to collection services as called for in the rate study, there will still be a deficit of three hundred and one thousand two hundred and forty-four dollars with the added expenses of the new single-stream recycling program. The budget model indicates that with a one point five percent increase to tipping fees, a three percent increase to collection services as called for in the rate study, and new single-stream costs passed on to the customer, the fund will be in balance. All of these scenarios assume that the city absorbs that one hundred and eighty-two thousand five hundred in one-time startup costs from the current FY fifteen budget. The sanitation fund cannot absorb additional single-stream costs without tapping into the sanitation capital fund or deviating from the rate study capital improvement schedule. This is what the new rates would look like with a, if the city absorbs the one-time startup costs, increases collection rates by three percent, and passes on the new single-stream costs to the customer. You can see the numbers.
So what you're saying is that that option number two can be reduced from a buck seventy-two to a dollar fifty-two?
Correct.
After all, thank you for all that information. Okay.
Walter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was hopeful to do this without increasing rates, but, and having just seen that just now, unless John Reba caught something I didn't catch, it doesn't look like we can do that. I'm like, like Dan, I, I feel people's pain as we raise taxes, raise fees, et cetera, but the city's got to have enough income to maintain services. I understand that, I get it. I'm certainly not a no-tax-increase guy in the, you know, in the black and white sense. But we do have a lot of money in capital, we don't have any plans to spend it. We have not increased rates for the past three years, if I followed you correctly. We've held that. Tim, what would happen if we absorbed the one eighty-two five hundred and passed fifty percent of the one fifty-two on to the customer, and did a new rate study in a year to see where we are on single-stream and solid-waste totes? And then, if it calls for it, do what we need to do. Can, I mean, do, we have, we have three, three point five million in capital are projected to at the end of this year, so we're not sitting here looking at zeros. I'm certainly not proposing that we spend that three and a half million picking this up, that's not my point. But do we have enough, enough cash without a, without a set plan to spend it that we could pass a partial, pick up the one eighty-two five, and pass half of the other cost on to the consumers while we see what all this does?
Which would be seventy-six cents.
Yes, sir. I knew I could find a question that would get Mr. Palmer up.
Well, Don, if I may, while Don is finding his slide that he's trying to bring up, you know, part of the issue we have here, those of you who attended the quarterly breakfast meeting last week, saw some numbers that were brought up that were, the cost of sanitation is huge when you start talking about closure costs, the costs of, I think, Mark Story, the Public Works Director for Whitman County, indicated their solid waste transfer facility, they're into it about five million dollars so far. We have three point, we will have three point four million dollars at the end of FY two thousand and fifteen. We still anticipate that the recycling center, it will either be moved or expanded. Single-stream recycling was not the use of that facility, so that's still under consideration. And I think the council needs to remember that, at the time the rate study was conducted, roll carts weren't a certainty, that we are only into those about a year and a half right now. Certainly, there were some benefits that have already been passed on to the ratepayers so far. Single-stream recycling will include a lot more of that waste stream going to recycling. It's a volume-based system, so if you have people who would go, for instance, from a sixty-five gallon cart to a thirty-five gallon cart for solid waste, MSW, or a ninety-five to a sixty-five, you're going to see a reduction in rate there. My caution is that, yes, we are on line with the rate study at this point. However, with the reduction of almost half a million dollars per year, without knowing what the impacts of either single-stream recycling will have on the roll cart program, we're really putting our financial stability at risk. Now, the council in the past has been very receptive to changing solid waste rates. In fact, from the time that we initially started off with the volume-based system in the early nineties, there was a rate that was put out there that the council thought, staff thought we were going to need, became clear that it was too high. We slashed the rate, the council slashed that rate by over half. And then, we went too far on the lean side, so then we attempted to balance that over the years. So I guess what I'm, I'm asking the council to consider, the rate study was put together very, I guess, in a workmanlike manner by folks in, in the city, appointed by the council. This is a long-range situation. Until we know what the stability of the sanitation is going to be with those two new programs, I would, I guess, advise the council to stay the course with the anticipated rate increases as called out by the study, and then, after perhaps this program is in place for a year and a half, and we can see how it's going to balance out, council very clearly can change it at that point. And again, we'll likely have a better plan, a better knowledge of what the actual capital costs will be at that point.
Mr. Mayor, a question for Gary.
Walter?
I think I heard what you said, but I'm not sure it's what you meant. You said, stay with the rate structure proposed by the rate study.
Yes.
It did not anticipate single-stream.
Precisely.
So what you meant, I think, was stay with the study recommendation plus charging for the single-stream change.
Yes. And I would, because we have the rate study increases, or the rate increases that were called out, as well as the anticipated costs that Tim's called out on the, on the single-stream. I would also note to the council that we are twenty years into the volume-based system, just about twenty years. We have a solid waste processing facility that's aging, there's been discussion about looking for alternatives for solid waste. That's precisely what the Solid Waste Development Fund is intended to do. The contingency that is maintained every year, I understand that we're not anticipating tapping that a huge amount this year because we don't have any, spending the time on single-stream recycling. But, in the future, we will continue to look at different programs as the public desires and the council directs. So again, I'm just asking for caution at this point.
Mr. Mayor, to continue, follow up, if I may?
Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Gary. But if we, if we move what's currently, some of what we currently call solid, or is solid waste, over to the, to the recycling because of the ease of doing so, that reduces our hauling cost. We pay, well, it doesn't reduce tipping, it reduces our cost of hauling, it reduces what we pay by the ton to put in the landfill in Oregon. So we have some cost savings there. I, I'm not sure whether, how it balances, and I would have to probably ask the LSI people, is recycling with glass not included, which is what we're talking about, is that a, is that a small revenue source, or a small or large expense to us? And I don't know the answer to that.
If I can recount a little bit, when we began this process, we set up a system at the recycling center that allowed LSI to market, or Moscow Recycling, a division of LSI, to market the commodities, and that profit they could use. We paid a per-ton tipping fee, but none of it was collected at the time. LSI was free to market it, and then they can, could keep the profits off that. Then we started the curbside recycling. Curbside recycling became a handling fee, and we absorbed that entirely in the solid waste program at the time. With single-stream recycling, as Tim's indicated and reported back to committee, all of this goes in a container, it's then bailed and sent up to a MRF, municipal... goes in a container, it's then bailed and sent up to a MRF, Municipal Recovery Facility?
Material.
Material Recovery Facility, and there is an expense. So you will be paying, the city will be paying LSI for the collection and maintenance of this program. It will then be shipped to the MRF, and the MRF will charge a fee for processing that commodity. Now, whether it yields any ancillary or attendant profits, I can't say. But I will tell you that at least the experience that I've been informed about, there's not a lot of money to be made back to the collection.
Gary, wasn't that your point about waiting for a year to see what was going to happen, how the thing would shake out?
Precisely. And commodities, and I'll, I'll remind the council, back in the day when we kept mixed-waste paper, at one point, mixed-waste paper was accepted at the recycling center, and LSI could market it and could make some money on it. So we began accepting it at the, at the recycling center. That was a really short-lived situation. Within six months or a year, bottom fell out of the market, it became a deficit, but it became one of those things that our community got so used to bringing mixed-waste paper in, that we continued to offer that service in spite of the fact that you couldn't make any money on it. So again, it takes a while to kind of ride this out and see how things balance out.
Wayne, you had a...
I did, and I appreciate everything that Gary said, because that's exactly what I'm sitting here thinking right now. There's a lot of, of intangibles, there's a lot of unknowns because this system has not been put into place. $1.72 a month is...
Or 52.
Not very much money, and I'm almost sitting here thinking that the discussion of trying to absorb that is more of a philosophical discussion than it is monetary discussion. I certainly would not like to see us try to cut this 76 cents and then have another rate study and spend thousands of dollars for these studies that we do, when we already have a good study already in plan, in place, that seems to be working all right. We haven't had to raise our solid waste rates in three years. So I, I really would like to see this move forward without a whole lot more discussion about trying to absorb this $1.72.
John?
Much as I hate to, Wayne, I agree with you.
I know you hate that, John.
The, and, without, you know, beating a dead horse, the amount of money that we're talking about between 150 and 1, and 75 or 76, or even 202, 220, it's not a material amount of money to an individual over a year's period of time. However, what it does is it does keep the amount of our capital projects moving in the right direction. And as Gary said, if, coming on to next year, a year and a half later into the future, if it turns out that we missed, I would much rather miss on the side of having to cut rates than to miss on the side of having to call a meeting like this and tell everybody, "Well, in addition to the 172, 150, 220..."
Better reason.
"...we're going to have to throw another dollar on it." And so that would be my reasons for supporting the number-two option as it stands.
Well, that being said, I'm, once again, now that I have the floor, I'm going to make a motion that this council approve option number two of the request for proposal response for modification of the services for single-stream recycling, and we advise staff to move forward expeditiously.
I'll second that.
Okay, we got a motion by Wayne and a second by Art to approve option number two as was presented by staff.
Can I have a clarification on that?
With the rate was proposed.
Dan, you had something you wanted to, you wanted to ask.
So this 172, that doesn't matter what size cart a person gets, it's, or is that an average?
The 172, if we, if the, if the city absorbs those one-time costs, actually becomes 152. So the, the rates that I showed you on that last slide...
Don't want to absorb?
You might not want to.
Include a 3% collection increase and $1.52 for single-stream.
But basically...
Everybody will pay the same price.
Basically, that's just your preference in size, whether, what you're storing, not, it's not...
It doesn't change the price.
Doesn't change the cost.
Doesn't change your cost.
Nope.
And, and whether or not you participate doesn't change your cost.
Doesn't change your cost either, right.
Wait, Art, and then I'll go to Walter.
Yeah, I think for the $1.72 versus the city absorbing the startup costs and lowering it to $1.50, I would much rather preserve the capital that's there with the idea that a rainy day is going to be coming, and we're going to want to expand the recycle center, we're going to want to move the recycle center, and we're going to need the money to do it. And so that, and with the contingency fund, the contingency is a contingency, it happens for emergencies, how do you foresee that? I would just say $1.72 versus $1.50, less than 25 cents a month, is not going to make a bucket of difference anywhere, and I'd just prefer to go ahead for my own self with the $1.72 and wait and see how things work out. We can come back and visit it again in a year after we have better data.
And Art, that's what the motion said.
Yep.
That's how the motion read.
And that's why I'm saying it on top of, because I believe that articulating why we're doing what we're doing is kind of important for everybody out there, so I'm recapitulating for my own sake.
Walter had something he wanted to hear.
Wayne made a comment, if I heard him correctly, that, that we have a rate study that's working well. The, the rate study is not on, not for the system we're currently running. It is for a non-solid waste tote, it is for a non-single-stream recycle system. That's not to say, it was, it was a good study at the, I would believe it's a good study at the time because it was based upon what we were doing at the time. So we, we really don't know until we run this, the new proposed, the new solid-waste tote system, and where it appears we're headed for solid, for, for a single-stream recycling, we really don't know where we stand on any of this.
And that's what Gary's point was.
I can agree with Gary, it's okay. It happens sometimes.
I happen to agree with Walter on that.
Yeah, we sometimes agree. I would still like to absorb the 182-500. I, I hate, I hate to flip to this and, and, and pass the entire cost straight through to the consumer.
Then you could have...
I would offer an amended motion, Mr. Mayor, that we absorb the 182-500 one-time cost, which would reduce the per-month on the single-stream recycling to 152, and we go with option two as the previous motion recommended, and that staff be directed to proceed with implementing the system.
I'd second Walter's amendment because, you know, any, any time we can help out is, is something that I'm in favor of. I mean, I would like to absorb it all, but...
Doesn't look like we can.
Doesn't look like we can. I mean, I, I was hoping it was there. I hope that we find out it's there later on down the road. Like you said, like you said, we're only, you know, a year and a half into the roll carts, and I think that we're seeing great success. We're not getting near the, the out-of-compliance stuff going on out there where we've got extra bags stacked around, and on top of, you know, the software seems to be working as far, and the, the cameras on the trucks seem to be working, so I'm hoping that that'll, that'll help us make this work. We're going to reduce what we have to, our tonnage, so maybe this will all absorb later on down the road.
Okay, the amendment that Walter presented, and Dan seconded, was to absorb the cost of the 182-5, which would drop proposal number two down to a monthly rate of 152. Correct?
Yes, sir.
So we vote on amendment first?
Yes, sir.
Yep.
John?
No. No.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Oh, get you what you get to do.
Having fun now.
Not a problem, I'm going to go no with it. And the reason for us, we don't know where we're going to head with this thing, we can revisit this thing a year, year and a half down the road, so. The amendment dies, so now we will vote for the motion.
Yep.
Yes, how to is, Walter will start with you.
Does, does the clerk have a question?
Excuse me, did you, did you vote nay, Your Honor?
Yes, I did.
Oh, just wanted to make sure.
Wasn't that clear?
It was.
I'm sure it was, we were just busy...
All right. We guys were talking while we were coming. Doing important business up here, okay. Now we're going to go back to the, the main motion that was presented by Wayne, and was seconded by Art, to go with number two as it was proposed. And I will start with Walter.
Aye.
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 Okay, so that passes 6 to 0. So we're going to go with response option number two with the 65, 95-gallon carts with what staff presented, so.
And I'm in favor of Tim's green carts.
Okay, we will move on to item number seven, street closure policy, Lieutenant Ronald N., Tyler Palmer.
$1.72.
They need a break.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd suggest we take a 10-minute recess before we start with these guys.
Okay, fellas, before we start with you, it's 9:01, we'll resume back at 19.
This next subject is boring, after what we've been through.
Okay, welcome back. Our recess is over. It's nine ten, and we're talking about the street closure policy. Les McDonald and Tyler Palmer, last you have this podium.
Mayor Lambert, members of the council. Got it out that time. Before you tonight is something we talked about at a council meeting a little while back, which is a street closure policy that will address a number of different processes that the city deals with in working with the public and contractors and events, proposals to close public streets, and how they're done, what the process is, what are some of the rules, what are the expectations. And the idea, as I've said before, is to make something that is really predictable and such that folks can understand what's gonna happen and it's consistent every time. So, that's the idea. We brought this to the council previously, and there were a number of questions that the council had and some suggestions on some edits, and we were directed to take it back to administration commission or committee, which we did. And now, we're back here, hopefully, for a final review. And the items I will run through fairly quickly, just addressing what the council asked about in the last session. So, again, we're talking about the policy and procedure for right-of-way permits for street alley and sidewalk closures, neighborhood block parties, and parades. And this would be dated April of 2015, if passed this month. One of the items that actually the council did not raise, but that did come up through reporting process, was a question about the use of streets and frequency. There was a bit of misunderstanding about could a street closure be limited to only weekends or something else? And so, we added a little text here in each section. This one is showing the Section Four conditions for parade closures that says that weekend events shall be limited to one day per weekend. The idea here is that we didn't want to have both weekend days taken up within a single event through one closure. It is not a prohibition of weekday activities, it's just that if it does occur on the weekend, it's just one day of that weekend. And so, that particular language has been added in each of the four sections that are in the document, four conditions. The next one had to do with the neighborhood block party specifically in Section C. And if you'll recall, those two sentences at the top, allowed without insurance or allowed with submission of proof and insurance, were options in the original draft that came to you. The council said, hey, we'd like to keep both of those, so the options there. Sent us back to rewrite those two sentences into one. So, what you see here with several edits, it's gone through legal and others, is that the applicant shall provide a signed release of liability and indemnification agreement or shall submit proof of insurance covering the amount of $500,000 for the event and name the city of Moscow as an additional insured on the policy. So, we're putting both options in here, cleaned up the language a little bit in terms of some of the terminology, and did include the city as an additional insured. The next item that came up was under construction closures. There was a question about whether or not the city of Moscow operations crews would be subject to this process and would be required to go through the permitting for every time we have to close a street. And the answer to that was no. We would follow the procedures and the methodologies that are prescribed in the policy, but not anticipating going through a permit process every time. And so, the suggestion from council was that we add some language to that effect. And so, now, we have this Paragraph Six stating that the operations and maintenance activities, including construction of new or reconstruction of existing city infrastructure, shall be exempt from the permitting process requirements of the policy. Section Six of the document related to noncompliance, there was a little bit of language here pertaining to how we deal with the use of public streets for block parties and for community events. I had some editorial comment there in yellow about the council needing to address how to proceed with this item. And after discussion of the council, the thought was that we'd modify it in this manner, which is that the provision of permits for a community event and for neighborhood block party closures shall be limited to open, or events open to the general public, that was the first part, for which the primary purpose is not for direct commercial gain by the applicant or associated parties. Incidental private commercial activity is allowed. If you recall, the discussion revolved throughout, we close the street for a community event, there's a band, the band wants to sell their CDs at a table off to the side. Is that okay? And the way this is now written, based on council direction, is that yes, that is acceptable, and that would be okay. And that was it. Those are all the changes. Any questions that you have?
Hey, Dan, the administrative committee heard this on March twenty-third?
That we did, and like Les said, we went through all the, you know, he showed us that, that day, the change in each of the sections about the weekends events limited to one day per weekend. And, and that's where we included also that, put those to the either-or as far as the indemnification of the city or insurance, added those into the one section there. And then, the incidental commercial activity in that, you know, like we said, selling T-shirts at whatever block party concert they had. So, you know, we recommended approval from, from that committee.
Walter?
Thank you, Mayor. Les, Roman numeral four, D six, regarding the city of Moscow operations and maintenance activities. That not only applies to the red trucks with the city logo on the side, does that also apply to city hired contractors? Ooh, I expected a quick answer, one way or the other.
Yeah. The reason I'm hesitating is there have been occasions in the past that we have required street closures, go through permitting process for city projects. And so, there are times where we have.
Any non-city crew, non-city crew, city projects?
Right. City contracted work.
Okay.
We have at times gone through that process. I think the intent here was that we would not have to go through that process, but I believe that we would still at times perhaps keep that as an option to do as a matter of good practice and making sure we had good communication among all the various parties that might be affected within the city and those, like the transit system, for instance.
Walter?
To you and the city attorney, do we need to modify this language to give you that flexibility?
I guess I would suggest that the, you know, the operations, including construction of new or reconstruction of existing infrastructure, would cover that.
I would, as I was reading this, the city would be excluded, they'd be exempted from having to get a permit even if they hired a contractor to come in and do it. I don't think that if they were having a contractor do the work, they would have to get a permit, as long as it was city-directed.
But if the city, if I may?
Sure, go ahead.
But if the city wished to have a contractor get a permit for whatever reason?
We could certainly require that.
Yes, the city would be.
Does that, does this allow the city to, to decide to do that? And Gary, I think Gary was trying to get in.
Yeah, I think it's, what Les is, I think, trying to say is that, that we, the city crews, of course, in doing their own work, wouldn't be required to get a permit. If Les chooses, or whoever's handling the contract chooses to have that contractor get a permit in order, for some other reason, to make sure they're following the processes, then certainly, they would have the right to do that as a matter of contract.
Okay, I'm good.
With that, Mr. Mayor, I would, would move that we adopt a proposed street closure policy and, and pass the related resolution.
Second. Okay, we've got a motion by Dan, a second by Jim Boland, to adopt a proposed street closure policy and the related resolution. And we will start the roll with John.
Aye.
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 And aye.
Okay, six to zero. So, we will move on to item number eight, which is city entry beautification, North Entry Project. Gary Reader, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you. See if I can. Always amazes me how that thing works. As the council knows, Public Works Finance Committee, certainly Walter Steed, who chaired the beautification task force or group, and Bill Belknap, who staffed that, what you see before you is the results or the priorities of that city beautification task force. And the one that we will be talking about today is this area, right up in this area right here, North Moscow on Main Street, toward the north entrance to town. I just have pirated a few of Bill's slides to try and help us illustrate what's going on. This is the North Entry Project, that when Bill made his report to council, indicated that this was a priority of the group and that it would be done pursuant to the design of an architect, which you see in your packet, you have a proposal from the architect as well as from the engineer to do the work along here in order to allow this to begin. So, this is North Moscow, Pintail Lane here, or, yeah, Pintail Lane and Radio Drive down here. That was not supposed to do that. There we go. So, these are just the artist's rendering or the architectural rendering of the, the things that can be done. When this was proposed to city council, we'll just go through the recommendations of the committee, and this were the prioritization for improvements. And as Bill indicated in his report, that there are a lot of the things, weed control, those sorts of things, and tree planting, that could be done with the city's own forces. But as far as improvement prioritization, these are the improvements that have been rated by that group. And at the top is the North Entry Enhancement. When Bill gave his report, he indicated that the price of that North Entry Enhancement was approximately $60,000. And there was a lively discussion, as you recall, on behalf of the council, on the part of the council, that this is a priority, wanted to see staff bring forward some sort of funding for the improvements in the FY 2016 budget. And so, we went back and looked.
Fifteen.
Fifteen. I think the direction was for sixteen, but we were able to go, certainly do what we could with the remaining funds in 2015. We went back and looked at opportunities to perhaps move this project ahead during this construction season in the FY 2015 budget. And if you skip to the last page of the packet, you'll see a memo from Finance Director Don Palmer regarding a potential for funding this project. We've got a couple of areas that we can, we feel we can tap funds. One is the Time Warner Audit Settlement for $35,546. This was a result of a cable audit, unanticipated revenues, we've been working on it for a couple of years, and that has since been receiveded by the city, and that is pursuant to our franchise agreement. Secondly, $10,000 from the Legislative Reserve or the non-prioritized projects line item in the legislative budget, originally funded at twenty, or two thou, or $25,000. It was tapped for $7,144 earlier for the second or third phase of the study for the underpass, for the path across Highway Eight, leaving a balance of about $17,856. If we were to tap that line item for $10,000, that would leave the council with $7,800 for the rest of the budget year for priorities the council could identify then. Finally, we would go into the general fund building budget, general fund capital projects, general facilities, and would come up with a hundred and fif, or, excuse me, $15,000 for that. That comes up to just over $60,000. Bill indicates that we can proceed with the help of Public Works and Parks and Rec, and we can get this project moving ahead if the council wants to authorize this funding. And of course, Don Palmer will put it in his open budget request, as he always does in August, but we can proceed with this in this fiscal year if the council so desires.
So, we can move forward with the project, and Don will open the budget in August for the improvement, but we can go ahead and get things.
Exactly. The authorization we're seeking tonight is to move ahead with the project under the conditions that I've just related, and we will go ahead and, and make that happen. And then, Don will bring those forward in the budget, in the open budget process.
Dan?
Well, I would make a motion that we move forward with the project.
I second that. Okay, Dan made the motion, move ahead with the project. Art seconded, and Wayne has a question.
Any way we can find $10,000 someplace else other than our legislative funds?
Certainly with the, we can, you know, we have funding in general fund capital, and we can draw that down even further. I guess from the way we were looking at it, Wayne, was the council had not indicated that there was any, anything on the horizon for the Legislative Reserve. So, certainly, that was an area that we thought that we would take the balance out, leaving that $7,800 in there for any council project they wanted. But, you know, we'd have to go back and reassess.
I think.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, we've had instances over the years where something akin to an emergency came up within the community, that the council has elected to utilize our own legislative general funding for, to help eliminate that particular problem. And by taking this $10,000 out, we continue to reduce this down to where we, the ability for us to cover that type of a problem lessens. We still have a number of months left before we get into the new budget cycle. In fact, we haven't even seen what the new budget's going to be looking like. So, while I certainly do approve of this project, and I would like to see it move forward, I would like to make an amendment to the motion that we direct staff to find, to take an additional $10,000 out of the capital improvement funds, as opposed to the council's legislative funds.
The amendment died for a lack of a second.
Died for lack of a second. Not batting very well tonight, am I?
Remember my 20 cents?
Give you 20 cents? Okay.
Well, we got a motion by Dan and a second by Art to move forward and approve the staff direction. I'll start with Walter.
Aye.
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 Okay, so, we're gonna move forward, six to zero. Thank you, Gary.
Mr. Mayor, a question for Gary, if I may, written on the same topic.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And Gary, we do anticipate at this time, absent additional thought or planning on using the red shirts again this spring?
My understanding, after discussing that with Dwight Curtis, our Parks and Rec Director, that he intends to utilize, he'll assess what the need is, but he intends to keep the weeds knocked down as directed, and will utilize whatever resources he needs. Whether, I'm anticipating they'll utilize those folks again, but I don't know that yet.
Okay, thank you.
All right, with that, we're gonna move on to item number nine, which is Moscow Urban Renewal Agency Annual Report by Gary.
Okay, in view of the relative lateness of the evening, I will be as brief as I possibly can. The annual report, suffice it to say that, and if I may, I'll pass around the audit that was just conducted by Press Nell Engage for the Moscow Urban Renewal Agency, if the city clerk can have it after the council is through with it. And this is all done, it's been adopted, accepted by the agency. We are required, as an urban renewal agency, Idaho Code, we're required by March 31st to file with, with the governing body, which in this case, the city council, an annual report that talks about real property that's held by the agency, and if it's been held for more than three years, why it remains unsold, and what we intend to do with that real property. As far as what the agency is, as you all know, in 1995, the agency was created for the purpose of rehabilitation, conservation, redevelopment, and increasing, if you will, the public health, safety, morals, and welfare of the residents. This is your agency board and staff. Agency board on top, John McCabe, Steve McGeehan, Brandy Sullivan, your own Art Betke, Steve Drown, Commissioner Dave McGraw, and Drown, Commissioner Dave McGraw, and our own John Weber. I serve as interim director for Jeff Jones, who left us last May. Don Palmer serves as treasurer. Stephanie Claus, city clerk. And then Finance Staff Joel, help me out, last name.
Dabbling?
Denublo. I won't live that one now. Joel, who also does the finances for the agency.
Denublo, no matter what.
There you go.
I was making the last name, sorry.
She's the one who keeps us in line. And Ryan Armbruster, attorney in Boise, but that's who staffs the agency. Tax increment, as has been explained in the past, when an urban renewal plan is approved by the city council, it first goes through planning and zoning, well, first goes through the URA, then planning and zoning, and are finally approved by the city council. When that's approved within an urban renewal area, and we'll get to that in a moment, the date that that plan is approved, property tax values are set or frozen at that time, and the taxing entities, in this case, City of Moscow, Leitau County, North Leitau Highway District, Cemetery District, Library District, all keep receiving the same amount of tax revenues they've been receiving before. And any increases in value, the increased property taxes generated on that property are paid to the Urban Renewal Agency for projects within the tax allocation area or the project area. We have two districts at this point. The first is Alturis Technology Park, which became, came into being in 2016, July 1st of 2016, to be exact, and Legacy Crossing, which was approved by the city council in 2008. As you can see, the Alturis is a fairly small district, while more encompassing is the Legacy Crossing District. And we've been reporting back and forth to council and certainly to the URA on things that are happening in that district. Just a quick recount as part of our annual report. Alturis Technology Park begun in 1996 with a base value of $6.4 million within the tax allocation area. Those funds, taxes generated, are still coming to the taxing entities. There's a current value in that district of over 22 million. So there's been a big increase in the almost 20 years, nineteen and a half years, since that district was established. As of last year, and this was prior to EMSI moving downtown, average wages in the area were over $50,000 within Alturis Technology Park. The economic impacts of the district were estimated $26.7 million per year. Phase two of that project, which was set in 2005, there are six lots available for sale, all owned by the Urban Renewal Agency, and one lot that's held privately in phase one. And the district closure is scheduled for the end of this year, the beginning of 2016. When that district closes, the taxes that are currently paid in increment to the URA will come to the taxing district, so they will see an increase in their taxes. Legacy Crossing was established in 2008. Base value and current value still estimated at this point. We have a piece of property that's owned by the Urban Renewal Agency at Sixth and Jackson, the old Leitau Growers site where Otto's Produce used to be, purchased in 2010. We're currently undergoing a brownfield cleanup, and there will be a realignment of the eastbound traffic turning lane, right-hand turn lane, and we've been working on that for some time. And an RFP for redevelopment was issued in November of 2014. Since that time, although it's not part of this annual report, three proposals were received for redevelopment of that property. The Urban Renewal Commissioners chose Sangria Downtown LLC as a successful proposer. Bill Belknap and I have been working, I as interim director and Bill is assisting at this point, dealing with or working with Sangria Downtown LLC on an exclusive negotiation agreement, which is the next step to redevelopment of that property. Got some great successes this past year. EMSI, which was out at Alturis Technology Park in the former Pacific Simulation Building, since moved downtown. You remember the Mark Wentz Project, the old news review building? The city and the URA participated in a community gem grant, excuse me, for bringing fiber and expanding the sidewalk and the profile of the building in the front. We've got a really nice, I guess, profile sidewalk, expanded sidewalk, new trees, new lights, that sort of thing, along Jackson Street. So that's a big success. EMSI expects to add another 10 jobs within this next fiscal year, so feel pretty good about that, again. And they were the ones that were, they have all of their, their jobs in their facility average over $50,000 per year, so we're happy to have them in downtown Moscow within Legacy Crossing. The Intermodal Transit Center and College Street were also participated in by the URA. The bulk of that, of course, done by the city, but the coalition with the ITC, the Coalition of the University, the Urban Renewal Agency, City of Moscow, and of course, although the URA did not have a lot of increment to participate, and it was mostly the city on the College Street redevelopment, it certainly has set the table for the style of redevelopment in that area, and a lot of good comments throughout the community on that. Sixth and Jackson redevelopment process moves forward, as I've just reported on. We have a coalition grant, $475,000, of which there's a little less than $100,000 less. That is typically, or traditionally been administered by our grants administrator, grants manager, as well as Jeff Jones when he was the URA exec. That's now Kyle Steele. Bill Belknap and Elisa are working on that. At this point, Terografx is our contractor on it, and the property has been assessed, and there are cleanup efforts that will be going forward on the Sixth and Jackson property. You can see there are three other properties, other than Sixth and Jackson, that currently have undergone phase two environmental site assessments, 1102 South Main, 207 North Main, and the industrial park site, Southeast Moscow Industrial Park. Again, Sixth and Jackson is currently undergoing a plan for cleanup. Right now, property is owned by the agency, because that is an integral part of the annual report. There are six lots, those are those six upper lines that all say Alturis. Those were intended for sale. They were developed by the agency with the intent to sell them for technology purposes in line with the RTO zone and the conditions, covenants, and restrictions of Alturis. With the downturn in the economy in 2009, those properties have remained unsold, but there are currently efforts underway to try and get them sold. So we're working with our, Palouse Commercial Real Estate has been retained by the agency for marketing. Staff continues to assist as our attorney in Boise assists as well.
Mr. Mayor, a question for Gary on that.
Walter.
With the closing of the Alturis URA, any impact on, on the, on the lots, the fact they're still owned by the URA?
Yeah.
Is that too much detail? How, how does all that work?
Well, they'll be, we'll have a, we'll have a closure plan, but what will happen is those will be retained by the agency. The agency will then market them, and whatever it takes to get them sold in accordance with the plan.
So closing the URA only changes the tax and tax increment portion of the URA activity?
Precisely. And the URA goes forward, of course, because we have Legacy Crossing, and then we have our general activities, so, precisely. So they'll be marketed as, hopefully, to get them built on this...
URA's properties.
Exactly.
URA's just the owner.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
And then, of course, Legacy Crossing, the Sixth and Jackson property, which was purchased for Public Pathway Plaza, and had been anticipated to sell at least part of it for a commercial site, as the agency had put out their RFP in November. So I'll stand for any questions you might have. Again, the, it was filed, the report was filed with the city clerk prior to March 31st. It is now, oh, and I meant to mention that when it was adopted by the agency, public comment was invited, none was received. So your job tonight is to, if you so desire, to accept the report.
With that, do I hear a motion from somebody?
I would make a motion that we accept the report.
I second that.
Okay, John made a motion to receive and accept the 2014 annual report of the Moscow Urban Renewal Agency, seconded by Art. I'll start the roll with John.
Aye.
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 We accept it, Gary.
Thank you very much.
Item number 10, accept the budget hearing, date for August 17th of 2015, Gary?
Probably the most controversial thing you'll see tonight. We've got, we used to have the public hearing for the budget. We need to set the public hearing for the budget in accordance with Idaho Code. We need to get that date to Leitau County, and that is the date that we'll have the public hearing on the budget. We used to try and have it the first meeting in August, however, in, there was always an issue with the valuations coming down, the new building, numbers, those sorts of things coming down from the county assessor in time to get them integrated into the budget. So we've determined that the second meeting in August is likely the best, the best way we can prevent having to do that again, so we would ask that August 17th be agreed to by the council and set by the council for the FY 2016 public hearing on the budget.
Gary, with that being said, we got the priority budget, strategic planning. When is our next meeting? Do you have that with John Luthy? Or can we just answer...
Yes, and I'm sorry, I don't have that with me, but it is the...
I just thought about when you did...
First two weeks, it's the second week of May, I believe, and I...
On a Tuesday.
We sent something out on that, but I'll do it again.
And that has to do with our question there that was sent in?
Yes, has to do with the budgetary priorities that we talked about at one time on the major challenge areas. And as I've indicated in the past, the, the priority-based budgeting will not be fully implemented in this year. Hopefully, we'll get a little farther down the road and be able to look at it next year in a more comprehensive way.
Wayne?
Gary, just to remind staff that, and I had sent that in as an email, that I will not be here on August 17th. I will have been gone, and I will just be getting back in country then, so.
Okay.
Okay, well...
I would make...
Dan?
I'd make a motion that we set the budget hearing for August 17th.
Second.
Okay, Dan made a motion to approve the budget hearing August 17th of 2015, seconded by Wayne. I'll start the roll with Walter.
It was John.
Was it John? John, sorry.
I was fine with start the roll with Walter, but after that, I didn't know what was going on.
You said aye, I said aye, and Art said aye.
I said Wayne was the second, but it turns out that John Weber was the second.
Well, I would not want to vote on something without having the correct second in the record, but if that is the case, I will vote aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
You actually had three seconds.
So it's August the 17th. Okay, with that, I will go to committee reports, Dan.
The only thing I have is admin, and we pretty much covered everything tonight. There was a couple of reports, but we'll see more from that later.
Hey. Art?
Had a couple of them. The Sustainable Environment Commission met on the 17th and lacked a quorum, so Nicole Baker's presentation of the final draft report for the water conservation plan couldn't be approved. However, there's a special meeting going on tomorrow of the Sustainable Environment Commission to do just that, and to also produce an Earth Day award nominee as well. Fair and Affordable Housing Commission met on the second, and relative to helping out students who are coming into town and renting, and sometimes subject to some fiscal abuse by landlords through their own lack of knowledge, is working with the ASUI to go forward and work on some education and some seminars and symposia to help out new students to make their stay in rental units more pleasant and less fiscally onerous in the end. So those were the two that met this time, and of course, the Moscow Thursday, I'll leave you to discuss that more, but that was a good time.
Walter?
On March the 19th, I attended Pback, where the significant item on that agenda was the group's approval, subject to one last draft review of the Palouse Basin Groundwater Management Plan update, which we'd worked on for quite a while. So that was done, and I understand that upon inquiry, Gary has asked that once that's published, it's undergoing some tweaks currently, and it will be out momentarily, but that copies of that plan be provided to all city council members, plus less, and a couple of library copies. So those will, you can look for those in your boxes in the next week or so. On March 25th, with Council President Carscallan's approval to, to represent the council, I attended the restart of the University of Idaho Alcohol Task Force Group. It's a fairly large group, representation from all interested parties, the police department, university security, and throughout, and working to consider who else might be asked to be, to participate in that, what other groups might be interested, so stay tuned for more from that. It was mostly an organizational meeting. And with that, I believe that's all I've got, Mayor.
Okay, Wayne?
Everything tonight was covered under Public Works and Finance at the last meeting. Earlier this evening, I attended a special committee meeting of the BTE-Awards for Most Valuable Businesses. This had, we had three categories this year, and one is up-and-coming businesses, and we had a nonprofit category, and we had a bright star category, which are brand-new ones. And we had 27...
Wow.
...applications, and these were, these were actually submitted by, not by people that owned the businesses themselves, but by other people that nominated them. So we had 27 nominations that we went over. Winners were chosen, I will not divulge who those winners were. And then last week, we had our Smart Transit Board meeting. Everything is working along pretty well there. We have submitted our new budget application to the state for 5311 funds. This will be for a two-year cycle, and we anticipate receiving enough money, hopefully, that we're going to be able to, as I've said before, perhaps start a third route, or an enhanced route. We look forward to that. We had one little incident today, there was an accident. There was, one of our dial-a-ride buses was going up Sixth Street, crested Sixth Street Hill, a young lady blew the stop sign, never even bothered to slow down or hit her brakes, and luckily, we had no passengers on the bus. The bus ended up in the southwest yard of Courthouse, but our driver managed to miss the telephone pole and everything else. The bus really had no damage to it to speak of, although apparently, the front, right front tire was hurt, but the whole front end of that little dodge was just completely tore off. We were lucky that nobody really got hurt. The young lady driving the car wasn't seriously injured, she just had some on-site treatment. So a little excitement on that today, but everything seems to be pretty good as a whole.
Jim?
The Clear Water Resource Conservation and Development Council met on the 26th, and the crux of that meeting was approval of a new executive director, who will start on April 20th. So we won't be, the ship won't be without a captain any longer on April 20th, and we should be able to move forward with the weed control projects and the youth conservation corps projects. That's all I have.
John?
The Human Rights Commission lacked a quorum, so there was no meeting. Planning and zoning met on March 25th, and a report was presented under the heading of Understanding the Community Perspective on Effects of Climate Change in Moscow. That was presented. There was a minor PUD amendment request for Tampa Commons that was passed. Legacy Crossing Guidelines on Window Openings Requirement Review, lots of direction given there, and then the review...
What was that again?
It is the Legacy Crossing Design Guidelines Window Opening Requirement Review.
Okay.
Lots of, lots of information there.
They won't have anything to do with filling the hole...
They won't have anything to do with filling the holes of those busted-out windows in the silos, will it?
No, no, it won't, because you like those so well.
Unfortunate.
And then there was a review of the FY 16 Commission budget request, which will, in all likelihood, remain the same as it was and has been for the last few years.
Okay. On March 25th, we had an airport board meeting, and incidentally, that was the day we sent in our ABC grant to see, for Frontier, to see where we're at, where we're gonna be at. And we're gonna have some information come in May, to see if we're one of the top 50 communities that qualify for this thing. And if we do that, keep your fingers crossed, if we do that, it's gonna be $35,000 for us, so that'll be kinda nice. So we're gonna know that here in four, five, six weeks. So that's coming up. March the 26th and April the 2nd, we had Vandal, or Moscow Thursday and Vandal Friday. In Moscow Thursday, we had vans downtown, shut off part of the street. Really a fun event, we had. And there was a bunch of counselors down there for both those evenings, and it was a fun night. It was the first time we've done that. Vandal Friday has always been a one-day event, and the university decided to go with two, two weeks of it this year, and so we got tied in with the Town and Gown, which is gonna be an annual process for us, and I'm very much looking forward to, that helps us with enrollment at the university, and we're all working together. And so that was a wonderful event, put together by city staff, Jen, and we had Gina Terus, your executive secretary, and a number, for the chamber, and a number of folks at the university worked together, put this whole thing together. It was pretty dug-on nice. And for those of you that were down there as counselors, saw that yourself and enjoyed it, so. And on April 1st, we had our regional breakfast, wasn't it?
Yep.
Colfax, and we talked about the single-stream recycling and their new facility that they put in, and their landfill, and so on and so forth. And so with that, Gary, I'll turn it over to you.
Just wanted to mention that the council had, and staff had their leadership breakfast with university president Chuck Stamen and his staff on the 2nd. That was well-attended, and certainly appreciated that. As was indicated, on the 12th, we will be having our next meeting with John Luthy, our consultant on our strategic plan. The budget hearings, or at least budget meetings, are full underway, so we'll be doing that over the next several weeks before, and then the mayor, of course, will take a look at the budget, and we'll get it ready for the meetings in July. Would also indicate, you've received some things from Lori Lewis, the executive secretary, regarding attendance at the AIC conference. So any of you who would like to go to that, if you could let us know early, so we're able to get accommodations for people, we certainly appreciate that. So thank you, that's all I have.
I have a question.
Gary?
On the, on the major challenge areas that we went through, that we're gonna be discussing on May 12th, we received a correspondence about how to rate those, all the rate those things, and then when will we be compiling that from everyone?
Well, when you send it back, it'll be compile, we'll compile it based upon, and of course, that's, you're working on them independently. We'll put those all together, and once that's done, they'll be brought back to the council on the 12th, and that's what the council will be discussing.
So what's the deadline on that? When are we all handing them in?
When do you want them back, Gary?
Yeah, when do you want them back?
As soon as possible, but
Should be done.
Yeah. The end of this week would be perfect, if you can get them.
What form do you, how do you want those presented? Do you want them?
You can check them off and bring them, bring them back, hard copy, or if you can, if you got them electronically, you can do that as well.
Then to send them to you, or to Lori, or to
Send them, I believe that we said they were going to come back to Lori, Jen, or me, or all three of us would make sure we've got them all.
Just bring the hard copy in that has them all, the 1 through 9, and the number?
Yep.
And, and are they supposed to be anonymous?
Uh, no, I don't think they're supposed to be anonymous. It's not supposed to be collaborated on at this point.
Art? Is everybody done? I would entertain a motion adjourned.
So do yourself entertain.
Everybody in favor, aye.
Aye.
Pause. Close at 9:54. Thank you, everybody. Have a nice evening.